Okay, the time is 10:02 and I'll call this, uh, government meetings in order and ask you to join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Harrington?
Here.
Mr. Merryle?
Here.
Mr. Gardner has been excused. Mr. Douglas?
Here.
Mr. Ferby?
Here.
Mr. Blades?
Here.
Mr. McNally?
Here.
Mr. Skozavala?
Here.
Mr. Cannon has been excused. Mr. Pootie?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Marnell?
Here.
Mr. Whitson has been excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Here.
Mr. Connell has been excused. Mr. Goyland?
Here.
And Mr. Preston?
Here.
You have a guest that has to address the board today. You've got Peter Ballard to come forward, please. Peter? Up here, Peter. I'm sorry. Just a microphone here.
Thank you very much Chairman Douglas for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Peter Ballard. I'm the Executive Director with Protect the Adirondacks. It was very strange to read the original Denton Publications editorial that called on other news outlets across the Adirondacks to blacklist Protect the Adirondacks and not report on our actions and called on us to be abolished. We had always thought the newspapers upheld free speech and covered all newsmakers, not just those who they agreed with or those who they favored. We were gratified that other news outlets soundly rejected the call and denounced Denton. In talking with leaders of Denton Publications, they assured us that they did not mean what they wrote, that they had no intention of blacklisting us, and that they did not support us being abolished. Denton Publications, as you know, soon recanted their position. They recanted their editorial. They put in reforms in place for how they will editorialize in the future. And in public comments, the publisher said the editorial was simply not fair and they believed very much in fair play. As Denton was walking back its call for Protect to be silenced and abolished, it was even stranger to read that the Essex County Board of Supervisors had endorsed this controversial editorial. The thing that was really strange is that unlike the newspaper, elected officials take an oath to uphold the state and the US Constitution, which protects the free speech of groups like Protect the Adirondacks. If you were looking to denounce Protect, you picked a poor vehicle for doing so. By endorsing the Denton editorial, you endorsed the call that Protect the Adirondacks be silenced and abolished. We have hundreds of members who live in Essex County. We have five board members on our Board of Directors that live here, two who own businesses. Government leaders should be in the business of protecting groups, watchdog groups, of hold government agencies accountable. I don't think that you were calling for a business owner on our board who lives in Minerva and runs a business in Minerva to be silenced and to go away. I don't think you were trying to tell the business owner who lives in Taiconroga on our board to go away and be silenced, but that's what this editorial did. The work of Protect the Adirondacks goes far beyond our legal actions. We manage the largest water quality monitoring program in the Adirondacks. We actively manage forest preserve management in all corners of the Adirondacks. We advocate for clean water, for wildlife protection, sustainable forestry. We work on a variety of invasive species actions. We undertake research and we intervene in private land use development across the park. And of course, we do engage in legal actions, just like the Essex County Board of Supervisors, which has engaged in legal actions against the APA. We could only do this work in a free and open society. We could not do this work in many other places around the world. The freedoms of the US, the freedoms of New York State, that protect a civil society, give us the opportunity to make our voices heard. And we take being heard seriously because the things that we advocate for have no voice. The trees can't speak. The mountains can't speak. The rivers and wetlands and lakes have no voice. The birds and wildlife have no voice. And we work to protect these things. That's why it's important that Protect the Adirondacks be heard, and that's why it's important that any effort to silence Protect or any other group like us be rejected. In his great "I Have a Dream" speech, Martin Luther King evoked the famous high peaks of Essex County. When he called out "Let Freedom Ring from the Mighty Mountains of New York", here today, this morning, in the shadows of some of those mighty mountains, I ask you too to let freedom ring and to affirm that Essex County is indeed a place where everybody gets a voice, where everybody gets to be heard, and where nobody and no organization should have to endure calls by government leaders that we be silenced or that we go away. That's unacceptable. So we call upon the Board of Supervisors to rescind your resolution of last month that was seeking the silence of voice in the Adirondacks. Thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman.
The board have any comments they'd like to make or statements? If not, we move to resolutions.
Resolution number 18, authorizing appointments to boards, committees, and/or councils.
Move by. Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Ferby. No discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 19, authorizing budget amendments for various departments. Move by Mr. Marnell, seconded by Mr. Grinnell. No discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell? Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 20, authorizing the chairman and/or county manager to enter into a contract with EC First to update HIPAA policy and procedures for a three-year period and in amount not to exceed $155,000. Move by Mr. Blades. Is there a second? Mr. Grinnell, under discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 21, authorizing New York State Department of Transportation Section 5311 consolidated grant applications for sponsors with continuing agreements. Move by Mr. Merryle, seconded by Mr. Moore. Under discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 22, authorizing the appointment of Brandon Boutel as Essex County Public Defender. Move by Mr. Pootie, seconded by Mr. Preston. Under discussion? I'd like to second that also. Do you want to second that? Do you have it unanimous, second? Second. Very good. Thank you. Is there any roll call? No. No? Okay. Let's do a roll call and you can all do it unanimously that way. We have to do it as a roll call. Go ahead. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 23, authorizing the reappointment of J. Michael Mascherinas, Director of Community Resources, for a four-year term. Mr. Skozavala would like to move that and I'm sure it's going to be unanimous. Um, as for roll call, is we need to do that and these appointments. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell's excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston? Four years is a long time, isn't it?
Yes, just kidding.
Resolution carries. Resolution 24, authorizing the addition of parcels owned by Lori and Michael Davis in the town of St. Armond to Essex County Agricultural District Number One. Move by, uh, Mr. Pootie, seconded by Mr. Harrington. Under discussion? You just roll call them. Just do a roll. To the board. Just want to reach out to agriculture. It's all I skipped. Okay. No, that's fine. All in favor, signify with a "a". Aye, aye. Any opposed, motion carried. Resolution number 25, authorizing the chairman and/or county manager to enter into an agreement with the town of Westport for the use of Essex County Fairgrounds facilities during the Fourth of July weekend 2015 for their bicentennial celebration with the town of Westport to be responsible for the cost of electricity and water. Move by Mr. Ferby, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Under discussion? All in favor, signify with a "a". Aye, aye. Any opposed, motion carried. Resolution 26, authorizing a budget transfer in the Department of Public Works in the amount of $600,000 from Old Military Road Project with $300,000 transferred into Holcombe Pond Project and $300,000 transferred into Roying Brook Project in the town of North Elba. Move by Mr. Pootie, seconded by Mr. Skozavala. Under discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 27, authorizing the marking of boundary lines on Essex County forestry property with funds to come from the Forestry Reserve Account. Move by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Moore. Under discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 28, authorizing the purchasing agent to go to bid in award for a timber sale in the town of Lewis. Move by Mr. Blades, seconded by Mr. Goyland. No discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 29, authorizing the purchasing agent to go to bid to RFP procure, under the procurement policy, an appraisal and a survey for the property of Ruth Morgan located at 1376 New York State Route 9N, Essex, New York, for the purposes of obtaining title to the Old County Infirmary Cemetery. Move by Mr. Goyland, seconded by Mr. Ferby. Under discussion? Mr. Skozavala? The, um, the surplus of the monies that we, um, have in the, in the forestry account, there's like $400 and something thousand dollars, can that, can that or can not be used for something like this? Land act?
Um, my, I have not seen how the...
It can't. It would be my opinion. I have not seen the, uh, capital reserve, how that was set up. But generally, a capital reserve, there's two types of capital reserve, a used type and, uh, a particular type. And, uh, it has to be used for the purposes for which the capital reserve fund was set up, and then there's other roles as far as getting at the money. I think we talked a little bit, if we did another local law, um...
If it's in a capital reserve fund, uh, you could do another resolution, I guess, removing that money into and set up another, either capital reserve fund or, uh, or use it for another purpose.
Right.
But right now, it's in the, the capital reserve fund was set up for a specific purpose, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
And that's the only purpose you can use it for. You can change that.
We've been through this in my account. So let Dan look at the language before we get into possibly using it for something else. Consider, I'd like to have him, you know, research the language that's in it.
Using it for what, though? What do you want to use?
Well, he's talking about using it here for, um, the purchase of the... Well, I think there's going to be, there might be other things that the board's going to want to come forward with, but, um, if that's the case, then we better get, find out the language, how it was established to be in, like, so... Comments, Mr. Ferby?
Yeah, I feel that we should be cautious of how we dwindle these funds away because I think there's some bigger ticket items out there that maybe, uh, that we need to address, uh, versus getting to the bigger ticket items, and then we've already, uh, put that money away on the other smaller items. So I think there should be a list put together, an initial list of, of projects that could be used, uh, this funds could be used for, before we just start...
Mr. Moore found the money, so I'm going to, whatever he says, we go ahead. Go ahead, Jerry. No, I just like to come back with Dan's opinion on this and stuff, and I'm cautious spending it too fast, just like Mr. Ferby said. Thank you.
Just, just to agree with what Dan Jarrett said, we really need to look at the use that that money is specifically designated for.
Right.
Can't use it for any other reason, unless you prefer to work.
I think you'd have to justify why the reserve is more than the intended purpose. So we still need a roll call on the resolution. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle? Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 30, authorizing Essex County to accept a three-year NYSERDA Cleaner-Green Earth Two grant in the amount of $1,939,668 for the term January 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2017, and further authorizes the chairman and/or county manager to execute a NYSERDA agreement, which relates to the North Country Innovations and Sustainability, and further authorizing to execute an agreement with ANCA to administer said NYSERDA agreement. Move by Mr. Ferby, seconded by Mr. Merryle. Under discussion?
I would just like to add to the caption and amending the 2015 budget accordingly, so, just so you know. We don't have to go through it, we'll just add that to the language.
No discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 31, to cancel penalties, interest, and other charges in the amount of $167.27 on 2013 tax paid on a parcel of property in the town of Taiconroga, having tax number 150.42-1-1.200. Move by Mr. Grinnell, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Under discussion? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 32, authorizing the purchasing agent to award a contract with J.E. Sheehan Contracting Corporation for the town of Essex Storm Sewer Project in the amount of $141,350 from budgeted funds. Move by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Marnell. Under discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 33, authorizing a correction of 2015 town and county tax rule, Town and North Elba-West Valley LTD partnership. Move by Mr. Pootie, seconded by Mr. Preston. Under discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 34, of condolence to the family of Virginia Jenny Hall. Move by Mr. Grinnell. Second. Thank you. Resolution 35, authorizing issuance of a permit to Ironman Lake Placid for the use of county roadways for the 2015 Ironman triathlon race. Move by Mr. Pootie. Second. Resolution 36, authorizing a payment to Prima for the 2015 annual fire and ambulance group plan contribution. Move by Mr. Preston, seconded by Mr. Skozavala. Under discussion? Mr. Ferby? This is different than we spoke about earlier, you see. Yeah, this is actually your coverage in the towns that is bundled through the county. Um, the county kind of upfronts those payments for those smaller fire departments that can't afford to pay them upfront. Um, but the whole, the whole policy is run through the county, but it's for the benefit of the fire departments locally. Any comments, questions, Mr. Skozavala? And then the fire districts reimburse the county. Right, yep. Mr. Ferby, just, just on reimbursement, then, how are the reimbursements, uh, equated? I mean, each department? Every, every department has been given a premium amount, which is included within that 305. And once we get the bill, we then invoice it out directly to those fire departments. Is it based on membership of the departments? Um, I think it is. Um, I know Bob Poitres went in and did a census count of, of the members within each of those and provided each department with a estimated cost of premium. Thanks, Dan. Any comments or questions? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number 37, authorizing a transfer from the contingency account in the amount of up to $15,000 for all costs associated with the acquisition of the Old Cemetery, Old County Infirmary Cemetery property in the town of Essex. Move by Mr. Goyland, seconded by Mr. Moore and Mr. Merryle. Under discussion? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused, Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number thirty-eight, authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance, one hundred percent of the federal aid and state Marchesselli program aid, eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project, and appropriating funds therefore.
Moved by Mr. Moore. Seconded by Mr. Pleady, under discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused, Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number thirty-nine, of condolence to the family of Helena A. Montgomery.
Moved by Mr. Grinnell, seconded by Mr. Marnell, thank you.
Resolution number forty, authorizing the purchasing agent to go to bid for the repair or purchase of a floor lift for trucks in the maintenance bay at the Department of Public Works Highway Garage, with such funds to come from contingency account.
I'm sorry, lost my spot, where?
Um, we need to move it to, um, number forty, we need someone to move it.
Further comments, Mr. Skozavala, seconded by Mr. Marnell, under discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Palmer. I just want to, yeah, we, we talked about this at Ways and Means, um, I had talked to Chris, the repair estimate, um, of twenty-some thousand was to repair the current lift, which is only twenty-four tons, um, the problem is that once, even if we spend that money, um, we end up having a whole lot of vehicles that don't get on that because they're simply too heavy down there. What the, what the, um, request really, um, and I think, you know, Chris is there, in case you want to confirm, but I think we want to go out and purchase a new lift of the appropriate size, um, which will allow for better use of the lifts down there, um, at the time. Additionally, um, what we talked about was, um, these funds wouldn't come from the contingent account, but rather, Chris would delay the purchase of the loader that was budgeted for two thousand and fifteen and purchase the lift out of that, out of those funds, and then would, um, rebudget for two thousand and sixteen in terms of the, um, loader. Because buying a hundred-some-ton, um, lift is, is not going to be cheap, it's going to be probably in a hundred-thousand-dollar range, so we needed a place to come, for the money to come from, so we felt delaying the loader was probably appropriate.
So this resolution needs to be amended to not come out of contingency, to come out of the two thousand and fifteen budgeted fund?
Right.
And would you take out repair?
We'll take out the word repair?
Yeah.
And at the end, we'll just, to come from budgeted funds, and then we'll do a budget amendment?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll move the amendment.
Moved by Mr. Skozavala, seconded by Mr. Maryhill. I'll hand over the amendment. Uh, any thoughts, most current now when the resolution is amended, need a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused, Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries, as amended. Resolution forty-one, authorizing a payment to Provident Insurance for supplemental life and casualty insurance coverage for Emergency Services Department for Deputy Fire Coordinators and Hazmat Team.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Maryhill, under discussion. Mr. Blades?
Can somebody tell me how many, uh, deputy fire coordinators we have in Essex County? I remember down at emergency, I don't know off the top of my head, um, Mr. Blades, but I believe that one time there was somewhere between five and eight, but I, I really don't know off the top of my head. I can, I can get you that information, but I believe it's between five and eight. They, they do a certain region, as you're probably aware, they do a certain region.
Mr. Preston, do you know?
It's probably at least twenty-five.
That's what I, I think it's twenty-one.
See, I didn't. Mr. Fairby?
Yeah, I just, uh, even when we brought this up, I questioned the, the cost of the premium, I guess knowing how many that it covers would help me swallow the cost, but, uh, in speaking with, uh, Bob Portress over the weekend, Bob did say he was going to revisit this, uh, cost and see if he could possibly bring it, you know, bring it up some. I, I talked out specifically about that, about putting it out on the street, just confirming whether that's appropriate cost. I'll agree with this today, but I just, I still think it's, I mean, it's, it's a great coverage for the individuals, but I just thought that the premium was high.
Dan's checking with Don Jacobson right now.
Yeah.
Any other further comments?
Of course, the more it covers, the lower the premium looks, you know, if it's only covering.
Do you guys want to wait for the response before we move forward? You do?
So let's just?
Just give it a second here, we'll. Don should be pretty good on response. And, uh, we'll come back in five minutes, we'll have the information.
Further comments, meeting back into session, and, uh, Mr. Palmer can explain a little further, we're still under discussion under that resolution, which is resolution number forty-one.
And Don says there are twenty-one deputy fire coordinators that are included within that policy, thirty members of the hazmat team are included, ten members of the RACIS team, which is the amateur radio, uh, operators.
Further comments or questions? Mr. Moore?
These are all volunteers, right? They don't get a salary?
Yep.
I mean, you can't expect them to buy their own insurance if they're volunteering, and they are going into hazardous places.
I agree, Mr. Moore, further discussion? Mr. Pleady?
I, I think the important thing here is that these individuals have been appointed by the county.
Yes.
So in effect, they are representing the county even though they are in an individual town's fire department.
But that's right.
So the fact that they're representing the county clarifies the resolution.
That's a real good point, Mr. Pleady.
That is a good point, and that, and that was really the, the Moore case, um, that came up a few years ago with the individual that died, the year and a half arguing over the coverage issue was due to, it was a county employee at a town location, and they argued about who should be responsible.
Mr. Blades?
I totally agree with what Mr. Pleady just said, my only concern was, are we overstacked in those areas, that's all I wanted to know. And, and, and I think you, you bring up a valid point, um, Mr. Blades, when I asked, um, Mr. Preston and Mr. Palmer to get with Mr. Jacobson and look at what areas they cover, um, and bring it back to the next public safety meeting, Randy, just so we know which area each coordinator's covered, and, and how often they're used, and some, some report that we can judge, bring back and forth.
Thank you.
Well, if I may, I mean, Dan is correct, this all stemmed from, there was a line-of-duty death, and at that point, there technically wasn't specific county coverage, and it went back onto the fire district, and then it got into the whole discussion, who are they actually working for? Basically, what it boils down to is the county is split into different sectors, and there's probably, on average, three or four deputy coordinators for each sector. For instance, Keene, Keene Valley, J., Upper J., Osable Forks, Wilmington, Lake Placid, and Bloomingdale is one sector, so there's probably four or five deputies assigned to that, and then, of course, it's availability, so on and so forth, that also includes the fire investigators. So each sector has a group of them, and depending on the situation, they normally get called out if it's like the, the, the third mutual aid company, you know, there's a large fire, then normally a deputy coordinator is sent to assist and help in coordinating. Um, that's basically how it works, and this came from that death, and the county basically had to step up to the plate, because quite frankly, there were some towns that flat-out said, we're not going to, you know, cover them if they're going to be engaged doing this stuff with the county. These deputies aren't being paid, so probably the least the county can do is, is pay for the insurance coverage for them, if we're going to have them. As far as how many do we need, are they really necessary, well, we should let Donny answer to that, because everybody, of course, could have their own opinion.
Can you get with him to?
Most certainly can.
Explain the discussion we had today, and you, you two can talk to him and figure out, so we just.
Sure, absolutely.
That, that was very good information for me that you just brought forward, Mr. Fairby.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm fine, I think, you know, they definitely, um, have earned the coverage, I mean, they're doing it, as we said, for volunteers, it was a hazardous job, so my, my question was answered, I just wanted to know how many folks that this premium would cover, that's all, I'm, I'm fine.
Mr. Blades?
My other concern is this, uh, addressing annual physicals on these individuals that are out there, uh, are they getting their annual physicals? I believe they are, I believe it's mandated that they are.
I think it is.
And that again, was another that came forward out of, that was, argued, yes.
And, and Randy, as long as you're having this discussion, and Dan, not that, one of the coordinators in my town last week just brought up to me that, because we give them a physical in town, and that wasn't accepted, because he had to go get a coordinator a physical, I'm wondering how we can save each municipality some money by doing the, the most at each physical, so on, one physical covers all, and I'm wondering if we could figure that out, because he told me he had to have three physicals in, in one year's time, and that just doesn't make sense, I'd rather take the one that has the most stringent rules and regulations available to use it, so we're not absorbing that cost within our municipalities. Yeah, that's, that's a good point, very valid point, we'll add that to the discussion also.
Thank you very much. Anybody else further on this one? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas? Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused, Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number forty-two, ratifying the execution by Chairman Randall T. Douglas of the CDVG grant agreement for project number three-eight-two CRF dash ME eight-zero-one dash one-four, and acknowledging that the same is an illegal force in effect.
Moved by Mr. Skozavala. Seconded by Mr. Maryhill, under discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused, Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number forty-three, authorizing the Department of Public Works to enter into contracts with Warren Electric, Schneider Electric for preventive maintenance, repair, and troubleshooting to the generator substations at the public safety building, in the amounts not to exceed twelve thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents for repair, two thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty cents for troubleshooting, and seven thousand ninety-two dollars and eighty cents for preventive maintenance services from budgeted funds.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Moore, under discussion, Mr. Skozavala.
I guess for Dan, now, we will, um, I'm assuming, continue some type of a contract for their continued preventive maintenance.
Correct. Once we figure out the problems specifically, we, we'll definitely do that. In reference to the twenty-nine-hundred that Jerry had brought up at the, at the Ways and Means, I did talk to Chris, um, at this point, he thinks if we are able to get some valid information from the data logger, that we may not have to spend that additional twenty-nine, but he is requesting that it remain within this resolution, so he has it available in the event they can't locate what the issue is under the data logger.
Thank you. Further comments, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused, Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution forty-four, authorizing the county attorney to purchase a Knicke Minolta Bizhub C-55-4E copier from Office Systems, in the amount of seven thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars and ten cents with a point zero zero five per copy maintenance contract from budgeted funds.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Marnell, under discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused, Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number forty-five, authorizing AES to provide engineering services for the design and specifications for scale at the Town of Mariah Transfer Station, with such funds to come from the reserve fund.
Moved by Mr. Skozavala, seconded by Mr. Grinnell reluctantly. Under discussion, Mr. Grinnell.
Is, is this cost, uh, I know it's large to the county, but is this assessed back to the Town of Mariah, or is this a county-wide, uh, county-wide charge?
Yeah, this, this would come out of the county's reserve fund, out of the five-dollar-per-ton fee that we set aside for these kinds of equipment purchases, we paid for scale upgrades in other locations, but, you know, that's, that's where it's intended to come out of at this point.
Mr. Blades?
So what I'm hearing is, there's nobody in the county that's, uh, able to actually do the engineering, uh, for, for this, uh, process?
That's a good question.
Yeah, again, I, you know, we hired AES to do these kinds of things for us, we do it, I, you know, I don't know if there's somebody within the county that could do it.
All trying to save money.
I understand, I don't anticipate that the LOA is, is a large amount of money, all I'm trying to get is a document that I can put out on the street, that anybody that's interested in bidding on this project will bid on the same document, whether that turns out to be a scissor lift, or whatever that turns out to be, I know, um, Dave in, um, somebody from DPW went over to Mariah to look at the location, to get some sense of what it is that would best suit that location, um, once I get that LOA, I can give you an idea what that cost was, um, if it's prohibitive, then maybe you would want to do something different, I don't anticipate it being prohibitive.
Chris, I'm going to put you on the spot, is there anybody in your department that can take a look at this to? You want to come forward, please, and then, uh? You want to come forward, please, and then, uh... Do it, Chris. Send it on, I'll curse the floor to Chris, then. Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Pleady, in favor, seconded by, saying, all right. All right. Chris, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I didn't know this was going to come up, but do you want to take a look at this? I mean, we'll still, I'm assuming the board will still authorize it, but then we could, if you come back and say that you feel comfortable evaluating it with your own staff, then we won't move forward.
Well, I mean, we can look at it, certainly, but I just, I'm just concerned about stamping the plans and taking the liability for it. That's my concern.
Comments or questions for Chris on this?
Mr. Skozavala? Yeah, I mean, I don't foresee this being a huge cost. You know, we do the second-most tonnage there in the county, next to North Elbon. Scrum does a lot of tonnage. You know, the situation that we have there, obviously, is we're charged by buying, getting rid of, and we do have a lot of other towns coming into that transfer station, and I think even people from Vermont coming into it. You know, we could, you know, we can close, if the town ends up doing this on our own, then we'll just simply, um, we'll just simply allow Towne-Mariah residents only to use the transfer station.
Are you saying Mariah, or Vermont residents, use your transfers, use the county's transfers?
We've had people from Vermont coming over there using that transfer station. So, you know, people from Crown Point, people from Ty, people from Westport, one or two from North Hudson, you know.
People come over sometimes.
We don't charge in North Hudson and your people in Mariah at all. I wish four of them would go there.
Okay, that's, get some control. Who's next? Anybody else? Mr. Marnell?
One time we should determine, I think at this point, how big a scale we want to size in there. We're not going to be weighing trailer trucks. So that would make it an option. The other thing we could do is talk to a scale, how many of the cell scales, there's so many different scales that are, some are portable, some are, uh, simple units, that, so we know what options we do have. Maybe you ask what kind, what if they, you've got to put in a one for fifty-ton, or we're not going to be weighing, as Alex Green Lake, where you're bringing, transferring from other towns, it's just for the use of, um, of Mariah.
So, from the chair's standpoint, the county manager's, let's move forward with the resolution. Have Chris go down with her, take a look at it, see what you think of it, and then come back and report to the county manager of what your findings are, and see what, yes, at some point, we've got to trust the manager and the DPW director to make the right decision. So, I would ask the board to approve this and let them, these two decide what the best move, or best odd move for us to move forward, but...
Yeah, just, if I can continue first. I mean, I don't anticipate or see the need for a set of scales that are laid in concrete. So, I mean, the few trucks that, commercials that we do, State of New York dumps there. We get the Crown Point campground, we get Lincoln Pond, and I believe we're getting, in Mariah Shock, Bill of Port Henry has a municipal pickup, they bring it all in by truck. And they're all single-axle trucks, so I mean, I don't anticipate, I think Mr. Marnell said a mess, I mean, you could go with an axle scale, there's different options that you can use.
Mr. Preston?
I'll come back to you. Oh, my question isn't about that. My question is, are we still under contract with AES that they're the ones that have to do this? Again, we're under contract for engineering services for AES for this kind of thing. You're never required to use them, but we have set prices that they bid on that were lower than anybody else's per hour for doing this kind of work. I don't anticipate this being a lot. I think, you know, once we get the LOA, and then when we get out on the street, yeah, then we'll know then, okay, what's it actually cost to do this? And at that point, we'd come back to you and say, this is what it costs. Again, you know, I, we want to bid this thing, and in order to bid, you need engineering drawings, stamped, certified, and everybody's bidding on the exact same thing. If you fail to do that, I will get one contractor after another saying, I did not know you wanted that, or I didn't realize you wanted it that way. So, I just, these kinds of things are important to me, to make sure that we have a stamped engineering drawing that hits the street. My concern wasn't that. My concern was, to be very honest, is we still have an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar building on top of Whiteface that has some serious issues, and, um, using this engineering firm going forward, to me, is a very big concern, after seeing that. And again, I don't, Randy, you and I have had this discussion, and I don't disagree with it. We have a three-year contract with them. I think it may be up, either, I'm not sure when theirs is up, it's this year or next. At that point, we can decide what we want to do. But I think for a project of this size, I don't have a lot of reservations about what they will do. I believe they'll do a good job, and I think we'll get a document that we can use for the bidding purposes, so I'm comfortable with that, and I don't anticipate that the LOA would be expensive.
Further comments or questions? Chris, so at this point, we're giving you a direction to take a look at it, report back to Dan what you think about it, and then we'll go from there. Does anybody have any further comments before we move on? Mr. Marnell?
Just one more time. If we, Mariah looks at the largest truck that comes in there, if it's a compact of a Port Henry, bring it up to Lewis and weigh it, then we know we've bought a set of scales that will, we won't weigh anything over twelve-ton, fifteen-ton, whatever that truck may weigh. There's no sense of them, they're going to, they've got to have a guideline, how big a scale do you want?
They've got to have some...
A trailer truck full of garbage, you can wear a single-axle compact truck.
Absolutely.
You've got to tell them what you want, or they're going to...
Absolutely, and that's part of why AES's responsibility, go down there and determine what's coming across the gates there, how much weight, what's the total, what's the best scale to be applying there at the least amount of cost. So, you're right, we need to know the tonnage, we need to know what's the worst case of drawing over scales.
Other, AES, they are engineers, but they're not perfect in every way either. And we can, or Chris can, or I can, any of us can, uh, talk to scale companies, talk to Peckham Materials, Greystone, these people buy them and use them all the time, and they can give us some input that might be just as valuable as what AES is going to read out of a book.
Chris, go ahead.
I can get that input, but it just goes back to the same thing. I need to know the largest truck that goes over that, that's going into that building. And as soon as I can get the information on the weight of the largest truck, I can go from there, and I can say, we need this particular size scale or up to take care of this problem.
Mr. Pleady?
Why are we voting on this?
We don't have to, we want to...
I think Chris should do the research. I'm all for Tom getting a scale.
Do you want to vote to move to table?
It seems to me that if we, Chris finds out from the scale companies, that they all say, hey, look at this handle, this size truck, don't worry about it, I don't get it.
Well, again, Robbie, the only thing I would say is that if I, if I'm going to do a sealed bid, I need to define exactly what I'm looking for in that, and that's what AES does.
He knows that, um, if the scale companies, if he finds out, um, I mean, certainly you know what my scales are. So, if you, if you know, you know the size of the vehicles, the weight of the scales, the scale will handle on my facility, which probably would be about the same as Tommy's. I don't, I don't think it's rocket science, but...
It's not, but, you know, there's prep work, and nobody doesn't do prep work the same as...
I know, and I understand that that's what's dragging this resolution. Maybe they're experts on scales, but they aren't experts on storage buildings, so, um, I'm not...
Yeah, I know that.
They're experts on scales.
But from my point of view, when I get these bids back, the worst thing I can have is every vendor that put in a price saying, okay, that's, I didn't understand that part, or that wasn't what I bid, or if I had known that, I would have bid differently. And the only way to avoid that is to have a set of stamped bid specs that say, this is what you have to put in.
Uh, Mr. Grinnell?
I think one other very important thing that's being overlooked is you're going to present a structure of some type that's going to be built in New York State, in Essex County, is going to be required for permitting by DEC, probably Department of Health, probably the APA, and if you don't have stamped engineered drawings, you're shot right there. It's part of the process that you've got to have experts design the feature that you're going to build, or you won't get a permit to even get the first step forward. That's what this accomplishes.
Mr. Merryle?
Right, and simply, I guess, the way I look at it, if these are county scales, it seems to me there are efficiencies involved if we can somehow stick to a standardization. If Keane has scales, I have some in Lewis, and they have some for commonality of parts, maintenance, and upkeep, which is our responsibility. I think that there is some reward for trying to stick with what we have if those have proven to be sufficient scale. Instead of, when Towne tries to find something completely independent, different, then we have a whole new manufacturer that we have to support. So to me, standardization is a bad consideration.
Further comments or questions? Mr. Blades?
What I was going to say is, we do have, I believe Jeff May is an engineer, uh, he works for Circle. Uh, Circle, uh, got the bid for the, uh, the, uh, whatever. Yeah. Why can't, why can't we use, why can't we at least ask him and see what his, uh, issue would be with, with the scales and...
So, do you want to move to table this, and so...
Can I just address this?
Mr. Skozavala?
On the table, and, um, and I have spoke to Dan May. I spoke to him last week, and Mr. Blades is right, Jeff feels that this is something that Circle would work with, the town. They know the tonnage that we do there. I mean, we can at least have Chris, Jeff, my highway superintendent, take a look at it, do the traffic studies, we have a lot of that done already, um, and then come back and see what we need at that point. Um, but, uh, but I, you know, I don't know if there's a conflict of interest if you have Circle down there doing this. I mean, I don't know.
I don't know either. You know what, I'm going to ask for the LOA from AES, I mean, whether you guys accept it or not accept it, that's okay. I'm going to know the price anyways, and then, whether you, the only thing you would be doing in passing this resolution is, if the LOA was acceptable and it wasn't a lot of money, then you would, we would be in the bid process sooner.
Well, I'm going to go with the county manager. He recommends we need this. I mean, all I want to do is weigh garbage down there.
You know what, I totally understand. I totally understand what you're trying to do, but it, the body, that some of the board members here have brought up the thought that it could save us money if we're in, can do this in-house, or gather an information for people that, other areas, like Peckham or who have you, that, that gather that information. So, I'm fine with either way, it's just it, being cost-conscious. So, Robbie, do you want to move to table this?
My intention is, rather than authorizing, I have no problem with you getting a estimate. This says authorize.
Right.
Which, which, which would lead me to believe you're going to instruct them to go forward. Rather than that, gentlemen, how much will it cost to do this? If you modify the resolution in that respect, I don't, I really have a problem with it.
So, requesting AES to provide engineering...
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, typically, I can approve anything up to five thousand, that's just how it is. I mean, that's, my local law has authority to approve up to five thousand. If this LOA was more than five thousand, I would fall out of the chair, to be honest. But, if you guys want me to wait and get the estimate, we can do that, I am issue with that.
So you want to move that as an amendment to that resolution, is, to get the estimate?
Uh, yeah, I will do that, move this on.
Okay. Amendment's moved by Mr. Pleady. Is there a second to the amendment? Seconded by Mr. Grinnell, under discussion. In favor of the amendment? Now, on the, resolution is amended, so that, so everybody understands what's going to happen, is Dan's going to get an estimate of what it would cost from AES to give us engineers' stamp plans on replacing, uh, the scales.
So, the resolution we will read, resolution requesting AES to provide an engineering estimate for the design and specifications for scale exemption.
All right. Anybody have any further on that? Mr. Marnell?
If they have a truck scale, they weigh the larger trucks. They don't buy a single scale. The way the homeowner comes in with their bag of garbage, they will never be accurate. They've got to weigh every bag that comes in there, and you can't go a two-dollar bag, I don't care who it is, every bag, if it's a bag of Kleenex or that, you weigh it, you pay so much. It has to be, so they've got to have two scales, otherwise, all the homeowners come to those bags for two dollars, and some are filled with who-knows-what.
Right.
You're more than, I don't know whether they get fifty cents a pound, but they will, you've got to have two sets, you've got to weigh everything that goes through there.
Mr. Skozavala?
And the digital platform scales, if that's needed, that's something the town's going to purchase. We wouldn't expect the county to purchase that, to weigh individual bags of garbage. We're just talking the big, the big haulers that are coming in, that's all.
So everybody knows the direction. Mr. Pleady, go ahead.
We don't have two sets of scales. All commercial stuff goes over the scales, all residential stuff goes through bags. If it's not in bags, it's got to be weighed, otherwise, they pay per bag, so, I just don't see, you have to have two sets of scales. Works for us very well.
Further comments or questions? So everybody knows the direction, that, um, Dan's going to get an estimate from AES, Chris and Kirk are going to take a ride down there and meet with Mr. Skozavala, they go over there, okay? Roll call on the resolution as amended.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle? Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Gorland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Resolution carries.
I just want to make a comment too about, I know we have this project that's gone sour on top of Whiteface, but I used AES turn, and I feel like a hypocrite if I said, yeah, don't say anything. I've used AES extensively since 2011 for Hurricane Irene, millions and millions of dollars worth of damages, and just last week, through the efforts of Jim Dugan, who worked for AES, and Harry Goff, I was able to recoup one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars, and if I didn't have the information from Jim Dugan, from AES, the Towne-J would have been out that month. So, there are times that they're, that they come through for us, and I've had fifty-two project worksheets in the Towne-J that were way above my head, and way above Chris's head, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but if I didn't have AES, I wouldn't have been able to go forward with a lot of these things to save the taxpayers in the Towne-J month. Chris, you're dismissed. Thank you.
Resolution number forty-six, authorizing the county purchasing agent to go to bid an award for the Gulf Brook project, and the Towne-Kean water building project, and the Towne-J, under the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program.
Moved by Mr. Farby, and I'll second that, under discussion.
I'd just like to add to this, a detail under this, to just authorize the county chairman and/or county manager to sign any and all documents or contracts related there to apply that language to us, if you have a language to... I'm just going to add it, I just said, don't want to apply that language, add that language at the end, he said.
Roll call ball, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Gorland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number forty-seven, authorizing a transfer of unexpended funds in the amount of twenty-two thousand in Information Systems 2014 Budget to Capital Project thirteen-dash-two.
Moved by Mr. Skozavala, seconded by Mr. Merryle, under discussion.
The capital project has been there for a number of years. We fund it on a, as we can basis, sometimes, sometimes specifically by a board resolution, but generally by leftover funds, and then during the course of the year, if we have a server that fails, or if we have some of the major network components that go down, we access the funds within that capital project to pay for.
Further comments or questions? Roll call ball, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Gorland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Resolution carries.
I just want to make a comment too about, I know we have this project that's gone sour on top of Whiteface, but I used AES turn, and I feel like a hypocrite if I said, yeah, don't say anything. I've used AES extensively since 2011 for Hurricane Irene, millions and millions of dollars worth of damages, and just last week, through the efforts of Jim Dugan, who worked for AES, and Harry Goff, I was able to recoup one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars, and if I didn't have the information from Jim Dugan, from AES, the Towne-J would have been out that month. So, there are times that they're, that they come through for us, and I've had fifty-two project worksheets in the Towne-J that were way above my head, and way above Chris's head, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but if I didn't have AES, I wouldn't have been able to go forward with a lot of these things to save the taxpayers in the Towne-J month. Chris, you're dismissed. Thank you.
Resolution number forty-six, authorizing the county purchasing agent to go to bid an award for the Gulf Brook project, and the Towne-Kean water building project, and the Towne-J, under the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program.
Moved by Mr. Farby, and I'll second that, under discussion.
I'd just like to add to this, a detail under this, to just authorize the county chairman and/or county manager to sign any and all documents or contracts related there to apply that language to us, if you have a language to...
I'm just going to add it, I just said, don't want to apply that language, add that language at the end, he said. Roll call ball, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused.
That's when I quickly left the room.
You didn't have a card.
Now, I had one. I figured you'd have one.
Thank you.
Um, roll call, please.
Oh, Mr. Marnell, I'm sorry.
I wonder if your Sundays are after hours.
I know, see, the more I keep, the worse this gets.
I guess, so that's how it works. After hours, I mean, by the time I got to New York, Judy, I'd gone home. It was 6 o'clock. I don't know, it was 9 o'clock at night.
All right, roll call, Judy, come on, help.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Merryle? Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Gland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Really, let me just, let me clarify something. One more comment about this, though. Think about it on the other side. If I don't get a hold of Judy, I use my credit cards. When the end of the year, when it says a travel reimbursement, that's included in the reimbursement to me of what it costs. And if there's a county credit card, that wouldn't be included in that cost. You see what I'm saying? So that counts against me, so to speak, when people think I'm traveling too much or what have you. Anyways, move on.
Resolution number 51, authorizing the payment of $5,500 to Fiscal Advisors and Marketing Incorporated for preparing the official notice of sale and final statement in relation to the $4.345 million bond anticipation note. And further authorizing a payment of $1,875.55 to Premier Printing Incorporated for preparing and printing the official statements, sale notices, and final statements for the bond anticipation note.
Move it. Move by Mr. Skozavala. Second by Mr. Grinnell, under discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Gland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number 52, of condolence to the family of Agnes V. Ward.
I'd like to move that. Second, thank you.
Resolution number 53, of congratulations to Megan Strong of the Alsebo Valley Central School Girls Varsity Basketball Team for scoring her 1,000th point.
I'd like to move that. Second, thank you.
Number 54, resolution of condolence to the family of Rita J. Phillips.
Move by Mr. Merryle. Second, thank you. Move the resolutions from the floor. Judy, go ahead and read what you have in the packet.
Okay, um, resolution introducing proposed local law number 2 of 2015 entitled "Allowing For Common Safe Items to Be Excluded From the Fireworks and Dangerous Fireworks" Definitions Contained in Chapter 477 of Laws of the State of New York for 2014.
Move by Mr. Grinnell, second by, uh, do I have 12 to allow now on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Second by Mr. Moore, under discussion. Under discussion, Mr. Farby and I attended the session that night, so just yesterday. You heard two days ago on this. And, uh, those have some more information to provide you, Dan, which you need. I don't know if I'm going to be able to begin, so, okay. Other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused. Mr. Pootie?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson is excused. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell is excused. Mr. Gland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Uh, you have a couple of other ones that we, I had Judy print out this morning. Uh, I suppose, believe. Maybe not. Want, uh, an email that came from Helen Jones? Did you give it to anybody else?
That one I did. I'm sorry.
Um, "Hey, Kat, is going to be celebrating your 50 years of existence on April 23rd. I'll have more information that comes available to us to enjoy this to an event in my class on April 23rd." But it's their 50th year anniversary, and I'd ask somebody to move the resolutions offering them congratulations. Move by Mr. Blades and, uh, Mr. Moore. They established in your town correctly, is that what they established originally? Um, other comments, questions? Oh, I need 12 to allow on the floor.
Yes, you do.
So, it was moved by Mr. Blades, second by Mr. Moore, under discussion. All papers signified by three and a half?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion's carried. Other resolutions from the floor? Mr. Gland?
On Ways and Means, the Medicare Part B contribution for retired, uh, disabled retired employees of, uh, of the county. Um, this was defeated. Ways and Means, I voted against it. Uh, I think there's new information the sheriff had brought forward. And I think that since we're, we will be giving or denying to retirees that the county should be brought up with the full board. So, uh, I would move that we bring this back up for a vote and allow the sheriff to address, and Mr. Palmer, address the new information.
I'm going to, I'm going to have, I spoke to the county attorney about this protocol a few minutes ago, and to discover what has to happen here as we move forward. So, this is.
Mr. Gland is correct in, uh, he's making a motion to reconsider, uh, the original motion that was, uh, resolution that was made in Ways and Means. Uh, and because, uh, that motion was made in, in the current session, what we'll call it, is what they use in our rules and regulations, that has to be done or been in forward. Um, so, the protocol is correct. Uh, you can make the motion to reconsider and then to discuss and act on any resolution that's related thereto.
So, the protocol here, Mr. Gland, was to bring that back up as, as a motion, and then I need 12 to allow that? Or is because it's part of the session, I just need a second to allow that?
You don't need 12, uh, you just need his motion to reconsider.
Motion by Mr. Gland, I need a second from the opposing side of Ways and Means.
It could be a second by anybody.
Second by, second by Mr. Skozavala.
Under discussion. Uh, give courtesy of the floor to the sheriff. Do I have a problem to allow that to happen?
Um, I need, I just, yes.
Sheriff, if you please come forward and give us a voice, please.
I'm not sure how much more I can, uh, explain, other than what we've already been over. Uh, the county manager did a chart of the 10 people that are involved. And if you look at the chart, and look at the dates on it, you'll find that one person involved in this, one of the 10 expires this month. There's another one in, uh, the middle of next year. A couple in 2018, a couple in 2020. The longest term on this whole 10 that we're talking about is 19 years. The overall cost is $61,000 to take care of these 10 people for that 19 years, with people dropping off every year. I know there's a lot of concern by opening this door, who else is going to come into it? How many more people were going to become eligible? Anyone that's worked for 20 years or more for the county would take a significant hit to take a disability retirement, as opposed to working toward their full retirement. In the case of my employee, he did. He took about a 20% hit in his retirement, if he could have held on for two more years. If they do take that disability retirement, then I have to think that it's because they have to have that disability retirement. And if they have to have the disability, then they certainly need a little bit of help here. Because they are taking a significant hit. In this case, this was an employee who is now earning about 30% of his salary. His wife is an aide at the local school. He has a daughter in college. He's almar. He's trying to make ends meet. He certainly is not flush by any means. This is a significant amount to them. And I don't know the other nine, I have no way to know. Uh, I didn't, I don't know if I'm allowed to know who the other nine are. But I can speak to this one case. And, like I said, it's $61,000. Overall, for 19 years, with a decreasing amount each year, unless more, come on.
Just comments, questions, Mr. Palmer?
Again, I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench in this, or, you know, because frankly, I don't, it's up to the board how they choose to do it. But, in the sense that it falls off, it doesn't fall off, it falls into a different category. Um, you know, instead of being eligible before 65, they become eligible after 65, which they would be entitled to under the previous resolution. So, when I talk about the $61,000, I'm talking about eligibility before 65. Money doesn't go away when they reach 65, it just gets transferred to eligibility over 65.
Comments, questions, Mr. Skozavala?
The 65 and older, we have, we have an option on that, correct? I mean, that's something that we don't have to do. Such as this is something that we don't have to do. Yeah, yeah. But we do it, and we've done it for. We've done it for a long time, you know, based upon the resolution that was passed back early 80s. Um, you know, I think, I think if you're going to change that, you probably could change it moving forward. I don't believe that you could take away an existing benefit for a retiree that's in place. Um, that becomes problematic, and you do get into some contract issues and lawsuits. But certainly, moving forward, this board could say, you know what? We can't do the Medicaid Part B reimbursements anymore. And for any new individual reaching 65, we're not going to provide the benefits. So, the language if this, in this resolution that's on the floor would read, "At least 20 years of service." That's correct. And must be drawn your New York State Disability Retirement. It said both New York State Disability and of course Medicare. And your social medic, right, okay. Um, and this is all revolves around, I get confused on the Part A and B. It's all Part B. Part B, which is deducted from your monthly disability check. It's deducted from any Medicare payment. Correct. If you are on Medicare, um, Medicare charges $105 per month for coverage under Part B, and they take that directly from your check before you see it. The county passed a resolution back in the 80s that said, okay, we understand that that's going to come out, but we are going to reimburse directly to those retirees over 65 for the cost of that Medicare Part B coverage. Which a lot of towns did back then, all. A lot of towns, some towns did it, some towns didn't. It's a real variety throughout the county, of towns that do participate and towns that don't. This is an employee too, who is also carrying the county insurance. I mean, they're, they're. They pay a premium, correct. I did the history, I mean, they pay a premium every month for their county insurance, which, um, is pretty significant now. And they have no option of the Medicare, they have to be on. I mean, I've wrestled with this, I've dealt with it in my own community, I've dealt with it personally under disability in the Part A and B. But, uh, I mean, I personally think it's the right thing to do for someone that has work, that's no longer working, not by any choice of their own, that has a legitimate disability. Um, and I guess what really disturbs me is the system in general, whereby we pay Medicaid for many, many, many able-bodied people out there that, um, you know, don't look for a job, can't find a job, or have no intention of ever getting a job. We pay that amount, uh, because we have to. It's just, uh, the system is crazy.
I agree, the system is wrong. I don't understand what you're saying. Um, my family's dealing with that right now, too, with my mom and circumstances. But anyways, Mr. Grinnell?
Uh, cou- couple of issues that I have. Um, the first is, we have what, 500 plus employees for the county?
Hmm, 489, somewhere's another area, yeah.
Uh, I'm sure any of them that are under the age of 50, 55, uh, feel they're invisible, uh, never considering an accident or an illness that could come upon them. I know I was that way, uh, before I went on disability. Okay? I realize what a hit it is to you financially when that happens. And that being said, I don't think it is prudent, uh, for the county to try and make up for a system that is broken. Uh, I sympathize with the individual that's, that's mentioned here, but we have 10 that already qualify for that position. Who knows how many more of those 489 or whatever are going to come up against that accident or illness that makes them qualified for this same program, and what it could go into. And that's why private industry shies away from this very situation in a manner that they sooner cut off their right arm than get involved in this type of situation. I don't believe it's anything, I understand that the sympathy involved, but I don't think it's anything that county should involve themselves in.
Mr. McNally?
Oh, where's the hardship here, taking the personalities out of the mix? I can't support changing the policy. Uh, you know, the policy's worked, uh, for the last 20 years, however, whatever. In the insurance, there is, you know, the system's broken, but, um, we're also have to go to the taxpayers every year with a 7.5% increase, and I don't think this policy should be changed.
Good point, Mr. McNally. Mr. Preston?
Um, I concur with, uh, Mr. Grinnell and Mr. McNally. Um, while I certainly sympathize for this individual, um, this is opening up a box of unknowns, and we're yet again hitting the taxpayer, the property tax, which I don't think we should be doing. I think that if there's that much concern for this individual, I think there's different organizations out there that maybe they should reach out to. Maybe there's some assistance. But, um, I think myself buying into this is just adding something else to the property tax. And, um, be quite frank, when is it their turn? That they get the break, because they haven't gotten the break here in a couple of years. Thank you.
Mr. Marnell?
Yeah, I've been an employer in business myself, and I've been at Silver Town Highways 20 years. So I've managed people. And I always found out, you take care of your employees, and they'll take care of you. So, I'm in favor of it. It is a cost, but we do spend a lot of money on things that, uh, I don't, uh, none of us do, but we can't help it, but I, uh, I would support it.
Thank you, Mr. Marnell. Other discussion? Mr. Harrington?
Are these disabilities work-related?
No. I can't speak to the 10, I can speak to the 1, and say it's probably not. It's a neuromuscular type situation. No. Now, these are not, just for clarification, these are not, um, these are always ordinary disabilities. If they were not ordinary disabilities, if they're disabilities caused by work, they would be under workers' comp. Um, so all of these, everybody you're looking at is, um, an ordinary disability.
And with that, Dan, I mean, even if they were work-related on workers' comp, workers' comp does not pay a full percentage of what they're owed. And they would still experience a reduction in their net pay a week. I mean, we have no cases of 50%.
Absolutely.
So, um, it's just a question, union, how many of these folks are within the union? Are they within the union? Are they all not? I just, I'm questioning what this is going to bring forward next negotiation time. Should this move forward? Where are we going to fall with union negotiation?
I, again, I didn't write down the names, so I don't have them in front of me. I think there's probably, you know, of the nine, what we're talking about, there's probably six that were previous union members. Thank you, Dan. Thanks, Mr. Merryle. And I, I do support the consideration with the guidelines that have been represented with the 20 years service, things, they have served the county. It's not like someone has just shown up off the street, took a dive, and then is trying to make a claim. These have been employees for 20 years. Certainly, it is an unknown, we may have five, you may have another 10 next year. To me, the consideration of the trade-off, as we've talked about before when we get into negotiations, it's guaranteed that if we do not change our policy, 500 employees, when they reach 65, will receive the same benefit. So to me, to the taxpayers, it's a non-mandated cost. That's the opportunity we have to assure the people that have served the county well are compensated if they do have unfortunate situations, they're on disability, but no longer go forward allowing a non-mandated payment for people who turn 65, just because it was very inexpensive 25 years ago to implement the action, and that's why all municipalities did it. It really didn't matter 25 years ago. It matters today. And I think that that's why I support this, as long as we're actively going to pursue a contract negotiation to try to close that door going forward. As Mr. Palmer says, you don't try to take that benefit from people who have earned it already. But going forward, that's a cost savings, I think that's significant. And we'll still be able to treat our people who serve the county.
Other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
No.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
No.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson is excused, Mr. Ginnell?
No.
Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
No.
The biggest, for now.
The resolution is defeated. Twelve fifty-three, yes. Thirteen forty-six, no. And three twenty-two is absent.
Right, most defeated. Thank you for the resolutions from the floor. Mr. Skazavala?
Yes, I'd like to offer a resolution to amend our adopting rules and regulations and proceedings for the Essex County Board of Supervisors, and it would be under Section Four, Regular Special Meeting Rules of Procedure, um, and...
Two hundred.
It would be, um, under V, all resolutions approved by Ways and Means Committee for Action by the Board at a regular meeting shall be in writing, and the clerk shall furnish copies thereof to each supervisor by emailing and mailing by first-class mail on or before Wednesday immediately following, immediately prior to regular meeting. I think there's a lot of duplication there, a lot of paper being wasted. Every supervisor is getting this by email. When we arrive here, it's also printed for us here again. I just wanna try to eliminate the mailing.
What section is it again, Tom?
Uh, Section V.
Does everybody have a copy of that?
V under Section, um, Section Four.
Does everybody have a copy of that in front of them to look at?
No.
Um, so I take a recess, Judy, make a copy of it. There's paper right there, Tom, and we didn't know you, I didn't know you were gonna make this work. Take a recess, Judy, make a copy. Back in session, and, uh, we're talking about, uh, uh, resolution adopting rules and regulations and proceedings of the Essex County Board of Supervisors. We do this at our organizational meeting that we did last month, but, um, Mr. Skazavala wants to bring forth some changes, and I just wanted you all to have that in front of you, um, so, Tom, go ahead with, again, what I'm bringing forward.
The, the only change, really, that I'm, that I'm looking to make, which would be a cost-saving, um, change is on, under Section, under V, under Section, um, Section Four is the word?
Sorry, what page are you on, Tom?
I'm on page six.
Okay, thank you.
Paragraph five. Or V, I'm sorry, B.
What page?
Six.
Aye, right. You're talking about committees.
It's B.
These are, these are what were adopted January eighth, thousand, sorry.
He is, he is invictus.
Paragraph six.
Page.
Page six.
He is invictus.
He is invictus. All I was suggesting is that we do away with the mailing.
Section four, over the rules. And then B, over to one of the brothers. I thought I did. I don't get them.
I don't get them either. I get them by email.
I get them, but it's usually after the meeting.
Well, I'm sorry. We, we hail all the resolutions, yeah.
Right, yeah.
After Ways and Means, we mail them and email them. We know.
So, what, what do you want to bring forward? Say it again, Tom.
To do away with the portion where we mail the, um, resolutions to every supervisor, and we do them electronically by email, and then when we arrive here, there's also a copy on our desk. So it's just stopping the mailing.
The only time we, correct me if I'm wrong, Judy, the only time we're doing that now is Ways and Means and Board of Supervisors providing them here, correct?
Yeah, yeah, providing them resolutions, yeah.
So you just want everybody to get them by email, and no more copies made out of...
No, no, you copy them and have them here on our desk.
Yes.
I'm saying do away with the copying and mailing.
Nailing them.
Email will be substituted for mailing.
Thank you.
Yes, I think that... You don't agree?
I'd rather review them at my leisure.
You can print them, you're gonna get them by email.
Well, I, I don't.
They come to mail, I get them by review. Let me, let me, let me...
I'll pay the, I'll pay the sugar.
Let me mind everybody.
Okay, let's do this. We're gonna, we're gonna put the words "or" emailing after mailing, it gives the option. But with the instruction to Judy that both supervisors want them mailed, we'll get them mailed.
Judy did send a notice out to everybody asking them how they didn't want to receive them, and they had to check that box, how they wanted to receive them, so, Mr. Moore...
Yeah, 'cause I thought we already did that, 'cause I don't get them mailed to me anymore, I haven't got them in a long time.
You don't get the committee information mailed?
No, I haven't got Ways and Means nor the Board mailed to me. I didn't get them mailed today, I got them emailed, and then I come here and they're on my desk. I haven't got the full, from Ways and Means, I haven't got them mailed to me in a long time. So I thought we already did that.
Um, no, I mail them out every month.
I don't get them. I haven't been getting them through mail, and I don't have a problem with that.
Oh.
I don't have a problem.
So we're just gonna have the word "or" email?
That's fine.
Agreed.
And I can still mail Mr. Marnell?
That's right.
And ones are on her desk.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay.
Do we really wanna make, do you wanna make a motion to change that, or, or no?
I, is it needed? I'll ask the attorney, or can we just have, let Judy know who wants them mailed and who doesn't?
We did, she sent the thing out.
Let's just have a resolution that says it'll be mailed or...
Okay, yes, then I will move that. Okay, moved by Mr. Skazavala, do I have twelve to allow that on the floor?
Yes, you do.
A second to that. Mr. Moore, under discussion.
Just under discussion, I have some history of this, and I, I remember a, a former clerk of the board that was told not to mail them, and then she got yelled at for not mailing them, so, God, these guys, come on.
That was before every supervisor had email. There was a couple that didn't have email accounts, I remember that at the time.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Let's do a roll call though, because it's a change of procedure.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill? Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson is excused, Mr. Ginnell?
No.
Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
No.
I don't think it carries...
Resolutions from the floor. Mr. Marnell?
Yeah.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill? Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson is excused, Mr. Ginnell?
No.
Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
No.
I don't think it carries...
No, it's a biggie, it's a four, no.
The resolution is defeated. Twelve fifty-three, yes. Thirteen forty-six, no. And three twenty-two is absent.
Right, most defeated. Thank you for the resolutions from the floor. Mr. Skazavala?
Yes, I'd like to offer a resolution to amend our adopting rules and regulations and proceedings for the Essex County Board of Supervisors, and it would be under Section Four, Regular Special Meeting Rules of Procedure, um, and...
Two hundred.
It would be, um, under V, all resolutions approved by Ways and Means Committee for Action by the Board at a regular meeting shall be in writing, and the clerk shall furnish copies thereof to each supervisor by emailing and mailing by first-class mail on or before Wednesday immediately following, immediately prior to regular meeting. I think there's a lot of duplication there, a lot of paper being wasted. Every supervisor is getting this by email. When we arrive here, it's also printed for us here again. I just wanna try to eliminate the mailing.
What section is it again, Tom?
Uh, Section V.
Does everybody have a copy of that?
V under Section, um, Section Four.
Does everybody have a copy of that in front of them to look at?
No.
Um, so I take a recess, Judy, make a copy of it. There's paper right there, Tom, and we didn't know you, I didn't know you were gonna make this work. Take a recess, Judy, make a copy. Back in session, and, uh, we're talking about, uh, uh, resolution adopting rules and regulations and proceedings of the Essex County Board of Supervisors. We do this at our organizational meeting that we did last month, but, um, Mr. Skazavala wants to bring forth some changes, and I just wanted you all to have that in front of you, um, so, Tom, go ahead with, again, what I'm bringing forward.
The, the only change, really, that I'm, that I'm looking to make, which would be a cost-saving, um, change is on, under Section, under V, under Section, um, Section Four is the word?
Sorry, what page are you on, Tom?
I'm on page six.
Okay, thank you.
Paragraph five. Or V, I'm sorry, B.
What page?
Six.
Aye, right. I'm sorry, six. You're talking about committees.
It's B.
These are, these are what were adopted January eighth, thousand, sorry.
He is, he is invictus.
Paragraph six.
Page.
Page six.
He is invictus.
He is invictus. All I was suggesting is that we do away with the mailing.
Section four, over the rules. And then B, over to one of the brothers. I thought I did. I don't get them.
I don't get them either. I get them by email.
I get them, but it's usually after the meeting.
Well, I'm sorry. We, we hail all the resolutions, yeah.
Right, yeah.
After Ways and Means, we mail them and email them. We know.
So what, what do you want to bring forward? Say it again, Tom.
To do away with the portion where we mail the, um, resolutions to every supervisor, and we do them electronically by email, and then when we arrive here, there's also a copy on our desk. So it's just stopping the mailing.
The only time we, correct me if I'm wrong, Judy, the only time we're doing that now is Ways and Means and Board of Supervisors providing them here, correct?
Yeah, yeah, providing them resolutions, yeah.
So you just want everybody to get them by email, and no more copies made out of...
No, no, you copy them and have them here on our desk.
Yes.
I'm saying do away with the copying and mailing.
Nailing them.
Email will be substituted for mailing.
Thank you.
Yes, I think that... You don't agree?
I, I'd rather review them at my leisure.
You can print them, you're gonna get them by email.
Well, I, I don't.
They come to mail, I get them by review. Can I be, can I be, can I be...
I'll pay the, I'll pay the sugar.
Let me mind everybody.
Okay, let's do this. We're gonna, we're gonna put the words "or" emailing after mailing, it gives the option. But with the instruction to Judy that both supervisors want them mailed, we'll get them mailed.
Judy did send a, a notice out to everybody asking them how they didn't want to receive them, and they had to check that box, how they wanted to receive them, so, Mr. Moore...
Yeah, 'cause I thought we already did that, 'cause I don't get them mailed to me anymore, I haven't got them in a long time.
You don't get the committee information mailed?
No, I haven't got Ways and Means nor the Board mailed to me. I didn't get them mailed today, I got them emailed, and then I come here and they're on my desk. I haven't got the full, the, from Ways and Means, I haven't got them mailed to me in a long time. So I thought we already did that.
Um, no, I mail them out every month.
I don't get them. I haven't been getting them through mail, and I don't have a problem with that.
Oh.
I don't have a problem.
So we're just gonna have the word "or" email?
That's fine.
Agreed.
And I can still mail Mr. Marnell?
That's right.
And ones are on her desk.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay.
Do we really wanna make, do you wanna make a motion to change that, or, or no?
I, is it needed? I'll ask the attorney, or can we just have, let Judy know who wants them mailed and who doesn't?
We did, she sent the thing out.
Let's just have a resolution that says it'll be mailed or...
Okay, yes, then I will move that. Okay, moved by Mr. Skazavala, do I have twelve to allow that on the floor?
Yes, you do.
A second to that. Mr. Moore, under discussion.
Just under discussion, I have some history of this, and I, I remember a, a former clerk of the board that was told not to mail them, and then she got yelled at for not mailing them, so, God, these guys, come on.
That was before every supervisor had email. There was a couple that didn't have email accounts, I remember that at the time.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Let's do a roll call though, because it's a change of procedure.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill? Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson is excused, Mr. Ginnell is absent, Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Does it, it still carries?
We have one that was provided by our county clerk, Mr. Provantia, um...
That's on your desk.
Moving on your desk, Mr. Marnell.
It's a resolution, um, required to file from his office as an annual accounting of monies received and dispersed from the previous year.
Moved by Mr. Moore, do I have twelve to allow that on the floor?
Yes.
Second, I, I'm sorry, taken by Mr. Skazavala. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill? Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson is excused, Mr. Ginnell is absent, Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Does it, it still carries?
We have one that was provided by our county clerk, Mr. Provantia, um...
That's on your desk.
Moving on your desk, Mr. Marnell.
It's a resolution, um, required to file from his office as an annual accounting of monies received and dispersed from the previous year.
Moved by Mr. Moore, do I have twelve to allow that on the floor?
Yes.
Second, I, I'm sorry, taken by Mr. Skazavala.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill? Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson is excused, Mr. Ginnell is absent, Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Does it, it still carries?
We have one that was provided by our county clerk, Mr. Provantia, um...
That's on your desk.
Moving on your desk, Mr. Marnell.
It's a resolution, um, required to file from his office as an annual accounting of monies received and dispersed from the previous year.
Moved by Mr. Moore, do I have twelve to allow that on the floor?
Yes.
Second, I, I'm sorry, taken by Mr. Skazavala. Roll call, please. Mr. Marnell?
Yeah.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon is excused, Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson is excused, Mr. Ginnell is absent, Mr. Connell is excused, Mr. Glorind?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Does it, it still carries?
We have one that was provided by our county clerk, Mr. Provantia, um...
That's on your desk.
Moving on your desk, Mr. Marnell.